February 23rd, 2016, meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. We do have a quorum. We have Brent McCleary from Legacy Church to do our invocation. And please remain standing for the pledge.
Father, we come today in the name of Jesus. We thank you, Father, for such a great country that we live in, that we are free to make decisions for ourselves. Lord, your word says in James that we ask for wisdom and that you give it liberally. Today, we ask for wisdom, Lord, to do business for With County. Father, that your presence be upon everyone today, Lord God, to make the right choices, to make this county prosperous and a success. Lord God, thank you for your wisdom, because when you said, "When we ask, you give it." And we pray out all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome everyone this morning to this tenement meeting. We'll get right into our agenda. First on the agenda is citizens' time.
Can I just add something?
Yes.
As usual, this morning, coming here, it's not that I don't mind stopping on the road, but we have places that the puddles are so big, there were gooses in this puddle on my road, and so on. Could we? VDOT doesn't seem to be getting the idea. How about if we had, there are county employees driving around. If we could have a sheet of paper that would say Dangerous Excess Water Report, and they came back, and then you guys could send it to VDOT, or something like that? Because it's not just, I mean, the roads that I travel, and I don't travel that many roads, I'm sure there are other places that are dangerous and in situation, plus the crumbling infrastructure. Possible?
We'll look into it, Lynn. And we remind everybody that call your representative or me on the board, and we'll get in contact with VDOT and see if we can't get something done.
So you're saying dry road is not dry?
Uh, no, it's not dry.
Does anybody else would like to speak during citizens' time? Here none, I'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting of February 9th, 2016. I entertain a motion to approve.
May I make that motion?
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections or changes that need to be made to the minutes? Here none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. House?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. I have a motion to pay the invoices.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second to pay the invoices. Any invoice any board member would like to discuss?
I noticed it was a lot higher, it seemed to be a lot higher. Is that because of some quarterly payments or?
Mr. Dalton?
Interest payments?
I'll write VDOT an email.
Huh?
I'll write VDOT an email.
Oh, okay. About geese? Okay. They got a manual for it, I'm sure.
Typically, they, we hold all the quarterly payments in February.
Okay, thank you.
They're due in January, and we just hold them in February, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, here none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is old business. Mr. Dalton, is anything in our old business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving on then to reports by the treasurer, Lori Nguyen. Good morning.
Good morning. Good to see everyone. Mr. Hale, Mr. Lester missed your last time, so get your first round with me. Since the last financial statements you guys received, the end of January, with that on month end, our consolidated account had $56,824,667. The general fund with the balance of $39,467, excuse me, $39,467,427, if I could talk right this morning. To date, as of the end of January, our total taxes overall collected, we had collected And I'm happy to say people are receiving their state income tax returns, and we are staying fairly busy right now. People are coming in and paying their taxes. As of Friday, since the beginning of February, we have collected almost another $191,000. So I think that's going really well. Last meeting, I did mention we were gonna send out late notices by the first of March. I've decided to delay that until the first of April, just because people are coming in and paying, and if we can cut down on sending out those extra tickets, that kind of helps save us some money there. But also, just trying to coordinate it with IT guy, our computer training system's taken up a lot of his time, so he hasn't had the opportunity to try to make the changes to the file that I need, because I do want to put delinquent balances on those tickets this time. That's something we had not done before, and I think it would be beneficial, even now we have people coming in and saying, "Well, I didn't know that I didn't pay last year's. I didn't realize that. Nobody sent me anything." Though they did receive a late notice last spring, but I just want to get that extra reminder out there to make sure people know they owe those extra balances. So that's kind of where I'm at with my office, and we'll dive into a bit more budget meetings this afternoon, I'm sure. But does anyone have any questions?
Laura, on these delinquent notices, does it show the penalty and the interest that they've incurred by being late, so they can get an idea that they ought to try to pay on time?
Yes, it does. And previously, what Mr. Crockett had done is, he had that listed as a separate item, and I'm leaving it as a separate item. What my intentions are, to include what current balance is for 2015, and then show the penalty and interest as a total, and then show any prior year balances, and then do a grand total at the bottom, and kind of try to emphasize that, that hopefully they'll just write that check and pay that amount, and not, you know, do portions or whatever. We do have a lot of people on payment plans, and so far, everybody's been really good about saying that they will pay when they're telling us they're going to. And I'm more than willing to work with anyone. If you're honest with me, and you put forth the effort, I have no problem working with you to get your taxes paid. I have no problem with that. So those folks have been really great. We're not having to chase anyone down yet on that.
One other subject, these guys are used to hearing me talk about the freeloaders that don't pay their taxes. Would you have time with Ms. Barker to meet with some of us and talk about ways that we can get these non-payers billed, and some way to pursue them, to get them? There's a lot of money there that's not being paid. And it don't show up on the books, so it doesn't look like a problem. But I have an opinion that there's enough dollars there to protect the other taxpayers that are paying their share. We ought to make an effort to go after those people that are not paying. But a question, would you be able to meet with us and work on that?
Sure, I'd be glad to. And that's something Ms. Barker and I can talk about, and kind of see what is going on there, and then be glad to meet with you all. That's not a problem at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you.
You're talking about your voice, you sound better than you did last time.
Better than I did last time, yes. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner of Revenue, Fay?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The only thing that I have is with reassessment, Lloyd Slaughter, he's the manager of the job, he came by the office yesterday, and he has talked with David, and it doesn't seem like that our computer system that we've got currently is talking to their computers. So he's suggesting that we somehow or another go ahead and get the Kama system. I don't know whether Tyler Muniz has a Kama system. To be able to, it's gonna have to be, you know, we've talked about Proval or something else, it's gonna have to be somewhere. I don't, you know, David's trying to get it worked out, but David's tied up with training, and he worked yesterday with Mr. Slaughter, and he got one part done, but then another part wouldn't work, so. And then the sketches, we may have to, I didn't see it in the contract, but Fred doesn't know whether that includes a sketch program. He knows that they have to do the sketches, but he doesn't know whether that it's in the contract that they have to provide a sketch program for us. And our sketch program won't work with what they've got, so.
Okay. Ms. Dalton, can we set up a meeting with some people, with Tyler, with Fay and David?
I think I can answer. Tyler Muniz does not have a hand with this.
That's what I was thinking, too.
What they do is that they work with Proval, Eagle.
He said there was another one that was really good. It was Patriot. I don't know anything about it, but.
But all we'll need to do is we'll see if there's a state contract price for any of those, and have them come in and make a demonstration. Proval is the closest we currently have.
He says Patriot's even closer, so I don't know.
Patriot?
That's what he told me yesterday. I have no idea.
Yes.
Could you give contact information for Patriot? And when you come back at 1:00?
Okay. If Lloyd's over there, or if I can get ahold of Lloyd, I'll.
Okay. Cause we'll be seeing you at 1:00.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay.
Any other questions or anything? Okay, thank you.
I know Sheriff, you're not on the agenda, but you have anything to add this morning?
I have nothing for the board, Mr. Chairman, unless you've got questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Sheriff, or any?
I have one related to him. Where are we with the van?
The lady that knows it's supposed to be delivered this month, or March. That's March 12th, next. We've had the same delivery date since last year.
Do you have any delayed time in getting the guys back on the road, or could you be doing the prep work, so when we get the van, they can be back out there? It's getting bad.
I've already talked to the regional jail, and we'll have a few during the week, in the weekends, we can have practically as many as we want to track it. And as far as somebody that's supervised in the nights, we lost David, we lost the last vehicle, we had to, this traffic pickup, then send it to court, so he could have gone to college. So I've got one part timer, strike down, possibly every minute, but probably gonna have to either get somebody to work the part of that, or a retiree, or find another retiree from law enforcement to supervise the inmate.
One last question, Mr. Dalton. That van, is it come and prepped, ready to go, or?
It's got the towing package and everything. The only thing it doesn't have inside is inside the cage for the driver.
Can we get somebody to cut down the cage, help the whole bus fit that?
As soon as we know the dimensions inside. But it's a 10, 12 passenger, so it's, and the way we have the other, the bus, is there's a cage to protect the driver, and in the back, there's a cage for both guys to sit behind. So we, let's look at them both, like.
Last I talked to Billy, there was a trailer, pulled it, pulled it, four five. There was some bearing problems on the trailer.
And I've been talking with Mr. Powers about that, and told him that when the van gets here, that trailer is to be ready to roll. And he said, when I talked to him last week about it, he said, "Everything will be ready. He'll have R and R setting, set the unit on there as soon as it comes in."
Any more, Doug?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Water Committee report. Do we have anything from the Water Committee?
We had something, but.
Do we have it in writing, or do I have to try to remember what we?
Really, the only thing that we did is we had extra money on two projects, Bear and Springs, Phase Two, and Spiegel, and kitchens, and Nixon, three, I guess. And we've had extra money left over with the good bids, and we've asked permission from Rural Development to use that money for additional items. Until they give us permission, there's really not, not big, we sent that board there for the water.
Okay.
And we made a recommendation on the Mr. Cordell's bill, asking to give him a partial credit and continue on the payment.
But that didn't, it didn't have to be approved by the full board, right?
The board.
That's what I.
The board did have the authority for that.
I was thinking we had to approve it, but after I mentioned it, I remembered that we didn't have to. I'm sorry. But I guess really, the Water Committee doesn't have anything.
Give them a bunch of permission, just talk there, you can give them all the, agree with that settlement.
Have we notified Mr. Cordell of the settlement?
It's my understanding he has been made aware of the settlement. I know that the leak adjustment report, everything with the adjustment, signed and done, and my understanding he has been made aware of. I can check there to break here and confirm that he has been made aware.
Okay. County Administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items. First item is the High Meadows subdivision to repair the San Sanderson, county attorney is conflicted out. You have a letter in front of you that asks for several opinions. Working with VDOT, the mail, I'm not sure he's talking to Mr. Kegley at the table, but basically, the letter says that the building permit should be issued until this manager is out.
Has Mr. Kegley been notified of that?
I have.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that this is, yeah, for us, it's the issue of building permits.
Actually, it's really an issue with the road.
Right, I understa, well, but it, yeah, it boils down to that, but is VDOT, did they issue a permit or a certification that the road was okay? I mean, do they not share some responsibility?
I guess, yes, and yes, and they have agreed to share some of the cost of fixing the road, just not to the level that the developer is willing to share the rest of it.
Well, I'd say it's a little bit of a scary thing, if you're doing something like this, and VDOT says, "We approve your road," and then later, they can come back and say, "Oh, well, we disapprove it?" Of course, that's, I know, we can't, we don't have any say-so in that, but it's just a, it seems to me, a dangerous precedent.
What the staff has done is, we've been working on it outside the scheme that is to get prices. VDOT gave us several alternatives, the road to be fixed, we provided it to the end. We've got a price for paving, just paved it. And at the end of the day, I guess, I've been talking to the owner of the property now, that just, if it comes down to it, that you have to add a certain amount to each line to cover that cost, to move forward. I think the attorney gets them all in the same room, and says, "This is what we want to do." Sort of, nobody wants to come up with 90 or 100 valves, or whatever the cost is.
Is that remedy option, put plant mix overlay and not go back?
It is. That's the price that we got for the plant mix, not that surface treatment alternative. We would be, and have no better road if we don't replant mix, just that's our.
Plant mix will take it out of the maintenance scheme for the next 10 years, and surface treating, tar and chips, it'll be right back on the table with VDOT within a year, so.
Well, we know how they've been doing surface treatments. They come back within two years, and spend all their money on plant mix, on top of, plant mix is the right alternative, I believe. Next item is a grant we got, that you guys need to accept. Now, 79, whatever it is.
Is that the safer grant?
Yes.
Can you give us a thumbnail overview? I read that thing, and knew less when I got done that than when I started. What are we really getting out of it?
What do you get, the 72 portable radios for fire and rescue of those people? And you got radio program, and what you didn't get, fun speaker microphones for radio.
Okay. Okay, I entertain a motion, and we accept the grant.
So moved.
Mr. Dalton, do we need amendment appropriate, same do?
And amendment appropriate? What is the amount?
I'm not sure you're gonna find out in reading that.
Is the 70,000, is that the 80% I'm assuming?
Yes. Might have the second page.
Okay.
Mr. Hale, add that to the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the grant of $76,315.68. Any discussion? Here none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. House?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Next item, Mr. Dalton?
We have a letter from the joint development authority concerning the Shafter expansion. We received a grant of $175,000, Governor's Opportunity, or Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, as they now call it, $260,000, which is back of Opportunity Fund, the With Opportunity Fund, $87,500. Because there's the amendment appropriate for the JID budget, we do have almost completed our letter of credit that the county attorney's reviewed, and provides us guaranteed repayment if they don't meet their incentive agreements.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Okay, next item?
Next item is the draft budget committee, or board meetings for the board hearings on our FY '17 budget. If y'all can get those days on your calendar, we would appreciate it.
Okay.
We have, handed out a couple other items for your consideration. We only have four appointments, and we need to be reformed by the full board, so.
Okay, you have a list of chief local elected official, Joe Hale, Steve Willis, industrial facility, City Leadership Council, Mr. Horni, and while upon the committee, Mr. Steve Willis. I entertain a motion to approve. Make that motion. Do I have a second?
Take it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so, point.
And the next item is just for information, we're gonna take on a new man, Gavin Ball, the governor's school. He's gonna be assigned as an intern with Mr. Ball.
Okay.
He wants to be an engineer in the future, so he's gonna spend about six to seven weeks, engineering department a day a week. Their insurance, we have all the, pretty much everybody's. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. County Attorney report.
Yes, sir. Working on your towing issue, so hopefully I have a memo to you soon about towing fees, about how the sheriff's gonna do that. And I guess really, other than that, I don't have anything else to report at this time.
Okay. See if board member having questions for County Attorney? Here none, okay. Board Supervisor report. Dr. House in Black Lake District?
Yeah, the one, I guess, yeah, big thing I have is that I'd just like to, you know, recognize and ask for a resolution to recognize Roy Tree High School's wrestling team. It's their third state wrestling champion, you know, single A in a row, so, you know, that's a, that's a big accomplishment for a recently small school. So I would just like to ask that we add that on the agenda whenever it's appropriate, that we do a resolution and invite them and their coach to come and pick that up.
I agree, and I would also make comment of the scoring, wasn't anybody anywhere close to them.
No, the, you know, the second place, they more than doubled, more than doubled the second place, which was Rappahannock, I think. Yeah, they, how would we say, they won decisively.
I think, Mr. Dalton, you take care of that. Okay, West Whipple?
It's been quiet. I haven't had any complaints or heard from peoples.
Okay. Eastwell? Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman. Nothing in Eastwell. Fort Chiswell District?
Same problems, roads, trash, and dogs.
Dogs. Lead Mountain's District?
Same problem. I had a lot of road calls, and I also had a call from Mr. Jeff Mead, who lives at 479 Birth Farms. He called and asked for some kind of help to help get a handicapper aunt built for his wife, so she's in an urgent home, and he wanted to bring her home, and he couldn't get her in the house. And I turned that over to Mount Rogers, and he is a veteran, and she talks like the veterans will take care of that for Mr. Mead, but I haven't talked to him in the last week, so I plan on calling him next day or two.
And District Three does that, too?
Okay. That's all.
Mr. Horni, Spiegel District?
I had a whole list, but I think Mr. Dalton has taken care of most of them. I did have one lady that called me about her water bill, something about that we changed the due date and moved it up a date instead of back a date because of a holiday, and she paid it on what, she didn't open her bill until it was due, what would normally be the regular date, so therefore, she was already late the day that she opened it to bring it to. And I don't understand why we would move it forward instead of just moving it back.
I don't know. The answer there is that if you mail this postmark, or if it's in the box out front, when we come in on the next day, it's counted as delivered. it's counted as delivered. Because we have on the, this month, the fifteenth, sixteenth, whatever day it was due, was on President's Day, which is probably what she stopped.
I was thinking this was her January bill.
Well, it, the January bill was on, uh,
Okay.
the evening. And on the previous Friday, I don't know what was on the bill, but I know last Monday when I brought mine back, there was about sixty in the drop box in there where I stayed mine, so that I would be credited with a late payment.
Well, accord, according to her, she brought hers in on that Friday and put it in the drop box, but yet she still got a late notice or a late charge.
What's her, would you tell me her name later?
Yeah.
We will take care of that. If it was in drop box, it should not issue.
Well, I, I was gonna say, I, from talking to her, I'd like to see her bill because I'm not sure that it got credited. So I'm wondering if maybe there's a possibility that her, that it could have failed somewhere and, and it didn't even, that somehow they didn't even end up with her check or something. But if, if we can take care of that, we'll do it. I don't know if I can spell it.
When we get the new computer system, will people be able to play, pay?
Pay online. That's all I have.
Good, good.
You think I got too much?
Do what? Oh, no, 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 no. I was saying that about paying online because in all honesty, I, yeah. I have to admit, I've paid late fees because it's the only check we write. And, uh, you know, somehow, yeah, so it's, it just.
I write mine, but I forget about it. On President's Day, I saw it laying on the counter and I brought it and stuck it in the box.
Yeah, well, she was just fussing because she said how many other people had to pay that late fee that really shouldn't have.
I don't know.
And I was like.
I will find out. We'll report for you.
That's what I told her is I'd think, I'd try to find out today.
And your discussion about being Q and V, uh, both of them been notified? Well, I went listening to Joe.
All right. Linda, Linda's fussing about ducks in her road. I, I don't have duck. Or not, I, I don't have duck. Well, I was gonna say, I don't have ducks or geese. We've got cow manure running down the edge of the road, so you know.
Okay, is that all you have, Gene?
I think that's it.
Uh, I just have one. I got a complaint from Jim Correll yesterday. He said that out on Cove Road, the potholes is getting so big, they're about to swallow his vehicle.
Well, but I will testify through the grand this weekend. Every road is pretty bad. We've been calling V D I about on a daily basis, sending an email. Really good so much. So, poor ride down this summer, it's made a bloody mess. But the rain tomorrow, the freezing is gonna be finished. So it's gonna get worse instead of better. So the only alternative is put stone down on the, on the roads in these places and then come back and try to grave it later.
Cove Road's paved, I think. It's just.
Yeah, well, interstate, uh, you noticed that last night, Interstate eighty-one was closed. One lane on the bridge over Route one hundred for potholes. Noticed exit eighty, the bridge over Interstate eighty-one seventy-seven was so bad, they had to come and build it the day before yesterday to try to get the potholes because they had had damage under that, whatever number you call, seven-one-one or whatever. Like twenty-some vehicles have been damaged hitting the potholes on that bridge. It's a pretty, pretty sad. I don't know many roads in county. Since I got potholes, I know Recreat Drive is a pretty terrible road there.
I think we need to.
I guess my road over the mountain is pretty.
You got it. Payment's so deep there, you won't need a pot, you won't have a pothole.
Oh. But, uh, maybe we need to start putting all these complaints, uh, formulating them together and send them to our representatives in Richmond, see if we can get the formality from V DOT to, for V DOT to fix the roads and maintenance on secondary, secondary primary roads. Okay, that's all I have. Anything else before we go into new business?
About three minutes, uh, recess, select.
Okay. Uh, we'll be in recess for five minutes. Continue with our agenda in the new business, uh, same calendar. I entertain motion to approve in same calendar.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Same calendar, any questions? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 Yeah.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is exposition center architectural engineering services, the lane group, Mr. Dalton.
You got really two items in there. One is a, uh, an agreement under the term contract for architectural services. And also the exposition center. The, we have three proposals, one to actually do the design. I asked the lane group to go back and remodel the, two of these. And the first one to talk about is the master plan for the, uh, exposition center property. And, uh, the, what has transpired is we cannot give the aerial photography that State Virginia V D I agreed, provide us with that property. And they still can't tell me what day, even though that was supposed to have been delivered back in November, of when it's gonna be. I asked a price for, for lane to do L I D R, which is, is proposal is not sixty days, it's six days. So that we can move forward with this. And then the master plan is not to exceed based off of hours and guaranteed not to be more than that. So I would ask for approval, not only of that, uh, aerial photography, but this master plan, which we will be doing tomorrow night.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any, um, open floor for discussion or question?
Would, I feel like a little bit in the dark here. What exactly, what's the finished product gonna look like from this?
What the finished product, you will have a master plan of, of that layout, including barns, reeds, parking, lots of purpose fields, the actual location of the, the main building and the signs. That's, that's what you're gonna get out of this whole thing. We did an application to try it. Some of the staff put together as the master plan, but it was just colors and areas of what's, we got. Well, we, the master plan will have, look at the flow through traffic, ingress, egress of the property, how to get everybody in, where the proper place is to put the entrance off the front of the road. And the other thing you'll get with the photography is you'll get one and two foot contours so that we can actually do a sign that's accurate, know what the cut of the fields are and the cost of the grade. That's what you're gonna get.
So this is basically a broad stroke type, type thing? Because, I mean, I, I.
Broad, but, uh.
Well, I understand the elevation and stuff, but they, they won't, this is not part of developing the, uh, the grade plan or anything like that.
The topo is. We gotta have this topo.
I, I just, but the grade plan is not included in this?
No.
Okay, I, I.
But you will have some rough grades because the only way you will be able to get a master plan here is to be able to figure out the elevations between the road access and the building, get the building sited. Because this got a slope, you gotta have landing areas, slope, flat plates. So it's, it's a little more detailed than just a broad scope, but it's not a finish.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is this plan, we'll put together all the information that we'll need to go the next step with the architectural and engineering?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this will include under the broad scope of things, whether, in my viewpoint, the master plan, the tiering of the site will allow it to minimize the grade. It's not a detailed plan, but it's, it's somewhere between broad.
But it's a necessary first step?
Yes.
Question, do, do, do we have a timeline that means something, that they'll have this work done? We're, we're compacting time here. And we've stated a completion date and it's gonna come to rub time real quick.
Joe, what they've promised is after tomorrow night, that we will have a master plan backed us in a week's time to approve.
Okay, and does?
And that's the building grounds coming, which meets, I guess it is next week.
That's cute.
So, but we've got to be finished with that and say, and then we can't, with the timeframe now, if you can't have a master plan, we can't go back through a formal process. We're just gonna have to say, that's why we want to design this building and it's gonna be right here to get the entrance apartment. And we have to have the design completed this bid about the first April, so we'll start grading sometime late April, but whatever drives it. It's gonna dry out.
Well, uh, related and sort of to Gary's question. If, is part of the master plan gonna locate the, the mid, mid property road?
Yes.
The new entrance, because it's a very important part. And so everybody understands it won't necessarily land on the expo site.
The ingress, egress of this is the most, for it to be functional, you know better than I to functionality, we've got to locate the ingress, egress in the right place. It's not too steep, cattle trailers, big trailer. Tractor trailers can get in and out and.
And be cost effective.
And you, you cannot have eight percent slope or some crazy. Wherever the road has got, this place could get the length. It could be a hundred yards to the south of a little property, this property's at, turn into it. Could be in the middle of this property, but wherever it is, that's where it ends up.
But that is part of the master plan, although it's not in the footprint necessarily.
Ingress and egress is part of the master.
Okay.
And, and you, you said a couple times tomorrow night, tomorrow, what's tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night's Wednesday is the first meeting of the, uh, authority you guys created at seven o'clock.
I, so, and, and the chairman is ad hoc committee member and you're the treasurer. So I'm assuming none of the rest of us come? Because if, if, well, if one comes and a second one comes, then somebody's gotta go home, don't they?
Well, I think you can attend a meeting, committee cap, you can just obey the, the meetings as a board member.
Well, isn't this part of the vetting process when this, when you were going, or is that tomorrow? When, when you're gonna get the input of what we're gonna build?
Yes.
So it can't be a closed meeting if you're gonna have input.
We're gonna, architects, engineers are gonna be there with little cutouts of the building size and shit.
So if the full board shows up and nobody says, says anything, we're, we're welcome to come.
I think if you're speak, uh, can't speak as a group if you're sitting there and they're shoving, shoving things around on the mat for talking about stuff, I think you as an individual can speak if you don't.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, if you can't speak, somebody go by the bed and bring a muzzle because I won't be able to sit there and not question their plan.
You can't speak as a group. You can't get up and greet.
I understand. Yeah, we're not even.
As an individual.
We're not even pretend to, yeah. The, the other question I have in this document is on the second page, uh, I guess in this, what you would call the second paragraph, it says, "With County has set up a steering committee to help guide planning and development of the project." I, I, I don't remember us setting up a steering committee.
Ain't that they talking about the, the group we're getting together tomorrow night to just talk about it?
I don't know the, I, well, I think our instructions to everybody here was that we're gonna build this building.
Right, I understand.
But if they, as part of the master plan process, and he referenced the steering committee, languages. But what we've said is that, yeah, we'll welcome your input, but we got five million dollars. But there, we've not set up a steering committee. I think we've set an authority.
I, so in, in this, it, it more or less references the authority?
Yes.
Okay, I'm all right.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
How about I?
And the chair votes aye. Okay.
And the second part of this, the, the term agreement for architectural services, basically committing no money except that we can call them and negotiate a contract at any point. There's architectural services that we can, we need.
And I have a motion. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion, second, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
I vote aye.
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 Yeah.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
The last part that I didn't put in your package and I rejected completely, uh, was an agreement for design of a building and facility that included construction admin, inspection, and I've told those guys that we're gonna do the construction admin in-house and inspection and a lot, a lot of the things. So they're restructuring that contract to follow the bidding regimen based off this master plan of where the building's gonna be in this access. There then, for the master plan, to give us a detailed cost estimate, what's in the master plan. And we'll negotiate the contract based off metal building design type of structure the state's got out there. And also what we can pick and choose to stay with in our budget with the five point A D, six point five.
But, but that will be done through a bid process?
Yes, but the contract, once the master plan's done, we'll bring another contract for the design of this building back for this board to look at.
To define the scope of the work?
Right.
Okay.
No, to, and to also specify, uh, the, the scope of work, we've already said, we're gonna build a building.
Right.
I, I think that was a misuse of scope of the work. Where we go to the next step, it's gonna be a design contract.
Master plan will have the scope of work, but, or the estimates, and for that, whatever, whatever our budget is, we can't sign a contract for them to design more than
Right.
our estimate of money unless I, we come back to you guys and say, give us more money. I mean, it's a, the next step is an important step before we're at.
Well, I, I, maybe I did miss. Well, I, I, maybe I did misuse scope of the work, I'm-
I, I probably used that word.
What I'm, what I was looking for was to find exactly, you know, what will be done, right?
I, I think at this point, except for this master plan, and we know we're gonna build a building, we know we need to ingress, egress, where it's at, and all those costs. They're still looping up in half, we did some preliminary, Mr. Vaughn did some preliminary work, but really didn't know anything about grades and, well, with all this work, I think we can get a better handle on all of this then and help.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question, may, may not be related to this, it is a, a little bit, but when we met with the, with the authority members, I asked how much money the Ag Expo Committee had, and they said about three hundred thousand dollars. Has, has, do we know, has that money been turned over to the, uh, to the Expo Authority? Because that will give them, that's the money that they'll have to operate on and hire people and this sort of thing, do we know if that's been done yet?
I don't know what's been done, I talked to Mr. Muncie, we had a meeting last Wednesday, and he was going to their group, the, the money from the Horsemen's Association, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, he said they vote and it'll be turned over to them.
To, to the authority or to the Ag?
To the authority.
Okay, to the authority, okay.
He actually put, I asked for a timeline, he agreed it would be within three weeks.
Yeah, two to three weeks. Anything else, okay? Uh, I guess all I've seen the, and heard on the radio, the capital improvement schedule that the, the school board has come up with, we need to schedule a joint meeting with the school board, do you have any dates, Mr. Duff?
I don't, I was hoping, I sent that out yesterday by email to you guys, so if y'all look at your calendars, it will be available any day, but as a group. But if you've seen those numbers, I gotta scare you a little bit, scare you a word for it.
And, uh, how about next Friday, the fourth?
Yeah, no.
No?
I keep being-
How about the third?
That's good. You doing a day meeting, night meeting?
What do y'all prefer?
On the third, I can't if it's, yeah, probably around lunchtime or, or later.
What does the staff prefer, a day or, or evening meeting?
Either one's fine. My suggestion, if we can do it at one o'clock or so, just go out to the school board and set up a, sort of a U out there. All the media and stuff, and we're just going there and sit down and say it's one to three, get out of there at three o'clock.
I, I can do it the fourth if you do it during the day, I can't do it at eight.
For the third, I, I've got skill on the first and second during the daytime, I, I can attend, but the third and the fourth either day is fine. I can do third, can't do fourth.
Third is, if we do it at one o'clock, that's fine, aye.
Charlie.
Fine, aye.
Third at one?
As far as I know, I can, I mean, I may have to leave early or drive a bus depending on whether or not I can find a sub.
Okay. Okay, we'll schedule it for, uh, March the third at one o'clock. Okay, are there something, anything on the other? Okay, here and then I intend a motion going closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the With County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to discuss the following. It's permitted by Virginia Code, section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one, a personnel matter involving a specific personnel matter. And also is permitted by Virginia Code two point two thirty-seven eleven A five, a matter involving a prospective new business or industry.
Okay, and I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. Make sure everybody cuts the mic off.
Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore being resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in this closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
I have a second on the resolution.
Okay.
Any discussion? Here and then I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Housman.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes, aye. Good morning, Mr. Russell.
How are you?
Fine, appreciate you coming, taking time out of your busy day, I know that, come and see us. Okay, we had some rote to say, and I'll, I'll break mine up first, that I got a complaint on, uh, Cove Road. Uh, this pothole about swallowed cars out there. And that's only one I had, and, uh, I think Mr. Horni had some.
Uh, I had Pope Road, but I've already emailed him, I didn't know he was coming. Of course, I mean, no, that's Dry Road, it's got the ducks on it, I think he-
Geese, geese.
Geese.
Or, excuse me, gooses.
There's water standing in evidently, evidently there's water ponding in Dry Road and there's geese that have made a home there.
Might have to see about a, a phone list, they might be in danger.
There you go. My only other complaint he knows about, uh, I guess, I mean, all gravel roads are bad, but I emailed him one day about a gravel road and it was beating my bus to death and all he did was tell me to just slow down. So evidently he's seen me drive through there.
No, uh, Jim, I, I did talk to Troy Crawford a while ago and he was on seven forty-nine, he said he didn't ready to go through Dry Road. And he said that, I think Ms. Myers had sent us an email.
Oh.
Then, a couple of weeks back, and he went out and looked, there are some pipes that are stopped, uh, of course with the snow, we've been busy and he said we want to let the water go down the road, so.
I can, I can understand all that.
They are planning to, they, we've got permits in place to ditch Dry Road, that's the oldest problem. And they're supposed to overlay it this year.
Well, that was gonna be my next question because somebody had asked me when they were gonna repave it, but he's a-
Probably a slurry seal.
What's that?
It's kind of the in-between surface treatment and, I'm planning, it's not a good plan, it's probably a better, probably, you've probably seen a lot of slurry seal in the past year. Rides a little bit rougher than plain, but I'm gonna go like this.
But it's not the tar and gravel?
Jeff, the one that, you know, has contacted me a couple of times and I've sent it to you, is that Ms. Patrick that lives out on Mount Erie Road. I, I didn't know what the status of that was, I, you know, tried to, because, you know, she kept emailing wanting the board of supervisors to do something and I, you know, I think I finally explained to her that we don't, you know, uh, but, uh, I don't know what the status of, of, you know, that road is or complaints or anything. It's not a, that's not a highly used road through there. Through what? Yeah, well, I think everybody lives on, yeah. She, of course, she would want it, yeah, she did want it on hard surface, uh, she, you know, she wanted it fixed, she says that it's, you know, it's terrible and the whole, you know, nine yards. Now, I, it's been years since I've been through, uh, through that road because like I said, there's really no reason unless you just absolutely live there to go on, uh, on Mount Erie Lane. Thank you.
I guess, yeah, we knew this was gonna happen when it was dry back in the summer, when we put on the four ride. And the roads are just, four ride attracts water and holds water, now you got mud, roads falling out of the bottom. I guess with all the salt we've been on, this winter, we've got potholes everywhere and everybody in the world calling about the potholes and the dirt roads, mud in the dirt roads, need and rock, raving, Pope Road, uh, I can, I can, I can just say every road's on the roadmap with, uh, I noticed even on the primary roads, ridge over, it's an eighty, y'all milled it out. I guess, what, what's the district's plan on fixing potholes, are they gonna have a pothole machine come in? How we're gonna fix, we're just gonna put stone down on these dirt roads, try to fix some mud rather than, or try to ignore it? Or is there enough money to do all of that?
Well, there's never enough money to do what we need to do, I mean, that's, that's part of the problem, we've got old pavements. They're probably been are longer than what's our usual life should have been, but, you know, we've got so much money to go around. It, it, it kinda seems like though this is a yearly fund this time of year and when you consider we've just come out of major snowstorm pretty well since January twenty-second, the big snow hit, we, we had snow, some deep freezes and, you know, considering that, considering the pavement of the age of it, potholes, they're gonna develop. And we really haven't had a, a good opportunity to patch it up, we've given, we've tried to get some as we, as we can, but as far as the amount of days available to patch it up, they just haven't been there. We sent out an email, I sent out an email Monday, yesterday, and I had told them last week that I, I sent it out again yesterday. Told them right now I want our focus to be on potholes, pretty well directing them to start patching, so. They should hit the primaries when they get a chance, which, you know, yesterday and today with, uh, with the rain setting in, it's hard to patch it up and be effective. Plant mix works the best, it's not available right now, the plants are shut down, when you use coal mix, that's kinda, that's kinda putting a band-aid on the home source part, so.
I saw the interstate contractor using coal mix yesterday after they turned it.
But it's inevitable, potholes have been, they were here when I came and before I came, they'll always be here and we are aware of it. We're gonna try to, I'm hoping the snow will leave us alone, we're expecting maybe a little bit, I think it's not, it's not major, but we are aware of potholes. They have been directed to fix them, dirt roads, the freezing and thawing, you know, that's hard on the dirt roads. Hopefully this rain, a lot of times a good, a good sudden rain will settle the dirt roads back down. But you're gonna have rutting and that's just, you can count on that better reliably as you can in potholes, so. Until they start settling down, if I go to put them, you know, we can address them, we can try to work them, but if I go to put them dump trucks loaded on a lot of these dirt roads, they will fall apart pieces, so it's kind of a give and take. Try to let them settle down a little bit and then go out and start working them good and putting some gravel out, so. But that's kinda our plan of action and how we like to see if the snow will leave us alone and dry up a little bit, maybe we can get out and take care of one of these issues.
In the governor's budget, did, uh, did they give any more money for maintenance? Or Beattie's budget?
Not that I'm aware of.
Y'all get to request, uh, more maintenance money, y'all, y'all just get what they give you?
I think they're starting to focus some more on, uh, infrastructure and pavement, so I have heard that we, we could be seeing a little more money coming in to repaving routes and taking care of payment issues, but I haven't saw it yet, so.
I mean, I ask a historical question, I mean, uh, it doesn't have anything to do with today and, and Jeff, it's way, way, way before you ever came, but if, if you drive around Smith County, you drive around Bland County, you don't find nearly as many dirt roads as you do in With County. What, what happened years ago that Bland and, and Smith got roads paved and, and With did? And again, I know that's way before you, so I, I don't even know if you can answer it.
I don't have a good answer, but I'm not sure that they have the amount of roads that We've County has, so.
Jeff, I've got two things, one of them you might wanna write down as a compliment. The guys did a great job on snow removal, e- even on the non-surface roads. Quick response really means a lot, people are trying to go to work at six o'clock in the morning. Some time ago, Andy and I had a road tour that got delayed to see if we could get some maintenance money into piping. If you had time, uh, on, on Military Road, on Grimmsport Road, both, you have the worst potholes where we've got a drainage problem. Cause you can't have water under a road and have a road, you know that, I know that. This secondary drainage has accumulated for many years of being ignored with the old concrete pipes are stopped up. I don't even know that we can find them except if we started looking where a pipe should be. There's probably a pipe already there, and y'all bought that truck, I don't know how well it's worked because I've never seen it, to flush the pipes. But what Andy and I talked about was look at these roads and see if we could get a couple of pipes on this one, a couple of pipes on that one out of the maintenance money. And it's gonna cut down on the amount of blade work y'all have to do on those roads, it'll cut down the amount of reorder and gravel. And then something I've heard you say to the people and it don't happen, pull the gravel back on the road. We've got surplus of gravel on a lot of these roads where it's being kicked back and kicked back, and I love that because the roads keep getting wider. And, and some places we're reaching right away width on our non-surface roads because with the traffic pushing it out and with the motor grader van pushing it out, sometime if you could pull that stone back and crown it and then somewhere you find the labor like we used to, I guess when you went to work, there was somebody on the ground kicking the big rocks and the beer bottles out, but we don't do that anymore. If the grader can't get it, it's there and, oh, the motor grader man, a lot of times comes by himself, he's sure not gonna get out. The grader and I wouldn't either to move a big rock, but if we, we've got thousands- But we've got thousands of tons of gravel that could be used if it was pulled back and crowned the road. Now, would it help any if we ask you formally as a county to get some kind of roller to where once these roads are worked and reworked? If these roads were rolled, we both know that they would last longer and you would have less maintenance time in blading roads. If we got a pothole or pothole on a non-surface road, if we brush it full of gravel, it don't last one day with Jean running over it at an excessive speed. It's knocked all those gravel back out. And one step more would be a better job of maintaining what we got, and I'm not sure that wouldn't be a cost-effective way to cut down on y'all's total time per road mile. How do we get you a roller?
I'm not, what you mentioned is a good idea in theory. And you talk about the good old days, but in the good old days, one area headquarters might have thirty men working it.
I know that.
Now, we're looking at quail.
That's why I said, can you find a guy? Will they allow you to use jail help?
Well, not a lot of that.
No, no, no. Ground point and shovel is not equipment. To walk down the road, clean out the head of pipe, throw that debris and big rocks out of the road, that the motor grader man can't do, it's ineffective for him to do it. But a man on the ground on these sections that we work, even if it was jail help, would help you get the road back to where it's maintainable. Now, let's separate that from the roller question. A vibratory roller would seem to me with the amount of lane miles of un-surface road would be paramount to building a road system that has a chance to survive. The potholes, as you know, the only way to fix them is to scarify it up, get it to the bottom and reshape it. And then if you don't roll it, you've destroyed the road. But drainage is number one. Stabilization of material is number two. And a year or two years, I think you'd be saving a lot of your hours of what the procedure has been. That's what I was asking you, still.
That would probably help, but I don't think it will happen. When you set a roller out in the road versus a single motor grader, you're probably gonna have to have flaggers, traffic control. I mean, we've got to follow the Virginia Work Air Detection Manual. You put that type of equipment that's out there on the road, you're probably gonna have to have a work zone. We just don't, our problem again is the number of people. The amount of dirt roads we have to cover, just like With County, we have two motor graders that probably are dedicated to unpaid roads, and we have a whole lot of unpaid roads. So, we're not able to give the attention needed to all the unpaid roads now unless we go putting a roller on it and additional, have to set up a work zone, have to transport the roller around. So, what you're saying is a good idea. It makes sense, but is it gonna happen? Probably not.
This year, you've got a surface treatment schedule in my district. Hope and pray it's gonna happen. It's not gonna happen if it don't quit raining, I realize that. But in those cases, if we're putting down two shots of chip and seal, you as a road builder knows if that gets rolled at time of application, you gonna have a better job. If you've rolled that prepared surface and you shoot that, get your double shot on it, and if you can roll that, it embeds the gravel better with the seal. And could you order stuff from district that you don't have, or do they not have it? A roller?
We have some rollers. We don't have vibratory rollers. Normally, we'll rent a vibratory roller if we need it for a little rustic project. You're saying surface treatment schedule, are you speaking of a little rustic project?
Yeah, yeah, what you've got scheduled.
Will we pave an unpaid road?
Yeah, this year.
If we pave an unpaid road, we rent a vibratory roller and we can pack the stone and then before we have asphalt, tar to it.
Well, you helped me here. We still schedule with no interruptions of getting Archer Road done and sealed this year. And then the half a mile of Miller Street, that was supposed to happen. Right now, it needs some extensive drainage. If that drainage was put in now, it would have an opportunity, or in the near future, it would have an opportunity to stabilize that road before y'all come in to start surface treating. So, I guess I'm asking you, can these projects be progressive? Fix that drainage down that long straight stretch? The water's doing fine in the ditch. In fact, right now, it would support trout. But it can't get back into the creek down there at the bridge. It goes down there in a very beautiful ditch, working fine. But gets down there right now at the bridge that I think this year's when that bridge is coming up, isn't it? They've been down there.
I don't know when they're cleaning that.
Well, they've been down there talking about right-of-way and putting a bypass in. I thought hopefully they would build a, put a free engineered bridge in there, but.
We stopped and looked at that with the bridge engineer three weeks ago, trying to, right now, it's a single lane bridge right now, right? And that's pretty well what we're gonna have to put back in place.
Why is that?
Funding, lack of broadway, but one of the problems that we discussed, which I'm trying to get them to, we're trying to come up with a solution. What are we gonna do with traffic while we work on that?
Well, somebody from Bristol has already talked to Armentraut about putting a bypass with pipes around the lower side. And width, I think you got thirty foot right-of-way there. If you can't widen that bridge, why are we doing it? It's load tested by loggers and heavy equipment.
I'm sure if deficient, it wouldn't be on the list.
But it's deficient because of width, isn't it?
Now, it won't be caused of width. That one, that's not the different factor. I'm certain it would be deficient, but I can double check.
Well, you know it's been load tested many times. When the power company built the 765 line, all those big heavy cranes went over it. They haul logs over it every year that are sort of marginal, whether they're legal loads or not anyway. But if we're not fixing that bridge.
I don't know where the law has crossed it, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's what the inspectors take into consideration when they do their reviews.
Well, that's, that's amazing to me that we would rebuild a bridge and put it back at an insufficient width. Isn't it to you?
That's what we're looking at. Just trying to be able to build it wider. And one of the things we're doing is trying to prevent spending a whole lot of money put into bypass. So, we talked to the bridge engineer about potentially just widening the abutments, put in precast, and leave it existing here, take off the rail at the end enough to leave traffic. Start setting our precast and then take that other one out and we can put the precast in and probably won't take a day or two to set those precast units versus spending all the money we're taking to put in a bypass. Get the pipes in the creek and build the people. That would be pretty.
But you realize with the traffic count, that if we take the bridge out of service, we're isolating, there's no way out of there. Because the Forest Service Park of Peak Creek Road is not serviceable now, and y'all are not gonna work on it to make it serviceable. So, you can't lock that many people in.
No, we won't do that.
Right.
We're just looking at a, trying to use a little common sense to come up with a way to get a structure in there. And if we did that at the same time, by widening the abutments and setting the precast units at the end of the project, we would have a lot of bridges. Kind of figure out a way that would benefit us without having to spend money on nothing.
Well, if right-of-way is a problem, we can negotiate a right-of-way easement to where you can get a couple of more feet, hopefully. Not as easy as it would have been a few years ago to negotiate it, but don't let the right-of-way make you make the wrong decision. But that bridge, it just doesn't make any sense to me to put it back as a single lane bridge if it's gotta be rebuilt based on your traffic count. I haven't heard a lady one, a late one, but that lower end was four hundred at one time. That's, a lot of commerce goes on there.
I'll double check, but I would imagine that bridge is structurally deficient, it's on that list, or it wouldn't be garnering attention for replacement.
Okay. Again, thank the guys for the snow removal.
We will try, although we had talked a few months ago at board meetings about getting together and riding through Archer and Major Grands, you had some concern about drainage. And we weren't able to get together for whatever reason. So, if you get a chance, give us a call one day and we'll find out how we look.
Yeah, funking time is gonna come again. I mean, we had a really bad situation last year, and with a few pipes and maybe some help from y'all recommending to Bottomlay to reschedule their routing. I mean, they will not run trucks both ways on that road because they say it's unsafe. And I agree with them. So, they were bringing loads out over the big bridge instead of going downhill with their loads and hitting Red Hall Road. I think they turned that around, didn't they, swell last year? And it might've worked better. It makes no sense to haul the loads over a mountain when you don't have to. And once we brought that to their attention, they turned it around, it got better. But about four or five pipes down that ridge there would do away with a lot of that problem and keep the water out of the road. And that's what we talked to Andy about, can that be done with maintenance money, even if you get two pipes a year? That's the same thing as the problem with Miller Street. I hope after this last blowout, we'll find out this week if that lower pipe's gonna hold. Then if we could get a little bit more secondary drainage, if you went up there to the ten-year water hole that was way up there, put that pipe in and you haven't had a problem in two years since you put the pipe in. And that was this minimum size pipe, like a fifteen or an eighteen. No potholes. You can run through there like my neighbors do at forty-five miles an hour. We've got about four other places, if we put one pipe in, the potholes go away.
Is that something, I mean, that's possible?
Let's go right and look at it. Thank you.
You may have any thoughts for Mr. Russell.
I do. Oh, go ahead, Chloe.
Sometimes if you get any money left, you might wanna look at a little complaint. Real rusty, good for funny. It's real bad getting out on the road.
Yeah, I had an email. I was trying to bring it back up and I lost it. It was from Joanna Corvin on Johnny Lane. She was fussing at saying whenever they scraped the road after the snow that they didn't scrape, they only scraped the paved part, they didn't do the gravel part. I mean, but isn't that kind of common practice, I mean, when they first?
We prioritize routes, primaries when you get off on the hardtop secondary thing, you're redupped, you're unstableized. But I would imagine if they, they probably pushed the hardtop surface part with a dump truck. And given the snow, they probably want some motor grader to do that.
Through the other.
I don't know if you can up it, you know, down in there with a dump truck.
That's, that's kind of what I figured was what was happening, was I figured it was just a dump truck went in there first and, and I mean.
Well, the good news on that road is that if you push it far enough, it just goes right into the creek.
Gotta get it across railroad tracks.
It'll melt, it'll go away.
But that was just a, she had sent me an email two different times about it, you know, just fussing.
If that is common, that's our procedure.
That's what I thought, I mean.
Then your hardtop secondary.
I mean, I don't know where she lives. I don't know if there was any chance that, you know, the truck could go on out and get past a couple of driveways out that way or something or not, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention since she had emailed me about it.
Dr. Dalton, you have anything else? Yeah, one last thing. I think under, y'all are allowed emergencies to clear a path into the fire and rescue? And fire department's been telling me that that's not been happening. I think Baron Springs, I know it didn't. And I'm pretty sure Max Metta's has been, but I don't know that we ever added the lead mines rescue squad building that we built on fifty-two to the list or told anybody about it. But if they, if you just remind them that that's as part of emergency services, that's one of the first.
That's the way policy is, is that we will, can entertain cleaning the entrances if we have requested, written, a written request to it. That's nothing that I will require. Now, I can mention this too, then.
For years, they've, I never heard the complaint till the last two snows.
And it may just be somebody's overlook looking at it, but I can bring it back to attention. I know we got a call during the big snow, we got a call from, I think it was a nine-one-one coordinator about the Max Metta's fire department that been cleaned. So, I got in the car and I rode out there, and it had been cleaned. I actually talked to the operator, he was out there in Max Metta's pushing at the time. He said he had cleaned it the day before. I went back and called, we called the nine-one-one coordinator again and asked him again if that was, you know, if it was the one on the hill or the old building across the train track over there. And he said, well, it's the new one. But he said, I'm actually that, but I didn't know if it had been lifted or not.
No, no, I'm pretty sure that the Max Metta's one gets pushed every time because, but I'm pretty sure that, well, I know for a fact Baron Springs wasn't pushed. And I think the other one that complained about it was Spiegel maybe. And I don't think we've ever asked for the one for the rescue squad that I know of.
Rescue, Lead Mines, Baron Springs, and Spiegel, the fire department.
Well, the four fire departments we got out in the county, I'll just get them all. Spiegel, Max Metta's, Baron Springs, and Ivanhoe. And the rescue squad that we've got out in the county is the one there on fifty-two at below the high school. If we could just, because of the big snow, we had a fire at Lots Gap, and everybody was trying to get there. And that's, and we understand, it's, matter of fact, it's tough to get all of them when you're, you've got a bunch of primary roads to fix.
I have no problem asking, I will ask them and remind them we need to pay attention to the business. For some reason, if you get a call or you see it, let me know. We're sure, I don't think we're overlooking on purpose.
Well, I'm positive you don't overlook it. I'm just remind, a friendly reminder.
You might have to remind us. I don't go by these, I don't know.
The only reason I know Bath Baron Springs was when both times I was heading to Feeding Hills.
If you see it, I'm gonna remind you, if you see it, let me know.
But I'll reiterate what Joe Hale said, the roads in With County were in pretty good shape compared to a lot of surrounding counties.
Jean said he has two more. I'm gonna cut him off.
Y'all gonna have to quit giving me time to think because I remember people that complain. I think I'm triple dipping. I had a bus driver complaining the other day about Old Mountain Road, and actually I had a. Mountain Road. And actually, I had a person that lives on it was complaining about it too. Of course, I mean, it's a gravel road, ain't a whole lot y'all can do. The other one was, I noticed on Back Road, they've, I don't know if you've been through there or know about it, but they put a lot of the big rock in the ditch, and they've got a couple of spots down the road that the ditch has come out in the road and is not running in the rock anymore. So I just thought I better tell you because if it keeps coming, it's going to wash more of your road away. So just trying to, trying to prevent a problem there. All right. I'm going to start driving like this, Jeff.
Well, Mr. Russell, thank you for coming. We appreciate you, all you help that you do for us and the citizens of the county. It helps a lot. If we can work together, that makes everybody happy.
Oh, it doesn't.
Well, we can say that anyway.
Yeah, we can say that.
Right, right now Jeff's got a hard job. I mean, because he could go out and haul the gravel in the world on gravel roads, and I mean, they're still going to be in horrible shape. I mean, people's just got to understand that. And if they've lived there very long, they ought to know it. Every year it's going to be that way.
Yeah.
Every year though, Jim, it's worse than it's ever been.
Yeah. Mr. Matthews just called me the other day. That's the reason I brought Pope Road up because he called me and said, if you can get anything done, we appreciate it, so.
Y'all have a good evening. If you need anything, shoot me, you never even call.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, you got your informational pack. Mr. Dalton, anything else we need to talk about?
Yes, sir. I think we did this, but since it's not in minutes, we really didn't do it. We need the board to accept the low bid for King General Contractors of Bristol, Virginia of six hundred ninety-four thousand two nine sixty-five and award that contract on Division one A Spiegel Extension Phase Two. And on Division, Spiegel Phase Two, Division one B, award a contractor to boring contractors for eight hundred sixty-four thousand six hundred sixty dollars.
Have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? The roll call vote, Dr. Housman.
Ah.
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 Jennifer, when we finish today, would you do an excerpt of those minutes so I can sign it and give it to Mr. Vaughn of those two motions, one motion?
I thought we'd done the motion.
We did. But you already approved the minutes and then reflecting the minutes on February the ninth.
Something I didn't realize. And again, you know.
I think we approved it pending their background or something, wasn't it?
I'll remind everybody, please go over the minutes and shoot, get her for an email back at an appropriate time. I mean, I look at them and I read them and I send an email when I miss stuff. I can't, when I was seven, I must look at it that, you know, one I was bound to catch something that went on that we didn't, that's not in the minutes. Yes, Mr. Dalton?
Second item is to, for the board to waive the penalty in interest on any payment that was posted on January the nineteenth for the December and January billing.
I will motion.
I will make that motion.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Ah.
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 The chair votes, ah.
Those if they were posted over the holiday. They can't go over the, everybody else pays penalty interest.
I understand that. That makes perfect sense. I have, I have a question, but I mean, well.
Go ahead.
Mr. Dalton, I had an email the other day from somebody wanting to know if there was going to be any paving done to the convenience centers in Spiegel and Slate Spring Branch. We don't have any money for paving them, do we? Okay, can we send somebody out a check and see if they need gravel?
They all need gravel.
Okay.
They're having okay.
As a matter of fact, I went to Austinsville and Ivanhoe Saturday before last, and you need a good pair of muck boots.
You need them just to get from my driveway to the house, and it ain't but ten feet.
Well, Linda missed the theme because I think there was ducks at Ivanhoe.
I think that's it.
I'll remind the budget committee, we have a meeting at one. We're not going to adjourn with recess until March the third at one P.M. at the school board office. Is that right?
March third, one o'clock.
So if that.
Full board meeting this afternoon or just?
Just the budget committee.
Just the budget committee. With that being said, we are now in recess.